Now it's like.
Goodness.
All proven and common for. Okay, well, calling. Uh, August twenty first meeting, the city council. And have a pledge of allegiance. Nice to be listening to pledge of allegiance.
Alright.
And we'll call.
Jensen, here, Ben Summerin.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Ben Blarkum.
Here.
Elkin.
Here.
Blanum.
Here.
Manor.
Here.
Can you see the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Take a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made in second in all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so. Item number one is public comment. Or any public comment that needs to be heard. I have a little.
Tomorrow. Things doing is having this waste disposal at Cook County. It's a nice thing to have access to. Place to get rid of those chemicals and paint and things and all that kind of stuff, so. So two to six tomorrow up at the sacred recycling center.
Good. This is a side note, Fran, you want anything to. For the Rockville Recycling Center?
Um, so things have been drying out, so they've been able to do some of the work. But there also was a state permit. Uh, that has also been holding things up quite a while. It looks like that's going to come through soon and then they can get back to work.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hey, very none? Item number two is updating the wastewater treatment plant by S E H. There he is, Mr. S E H.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, I talked to Taylor about getting on the agenda just to give an update. It's been a little while. Eventually, this project will be on the agendas as pay applications start to roll in and I'll have maybe some opportunities.
The next meeting.
At the next meeting, there you go. But I just want to give a quick update. They're working out there. Uh, the buildings that they're working on now is what we call the S B R sequencing batch reactor that's kind of replacing your moat. Uh, out there will. And then our, our headworks building or the wet well. That is where, where the main line comes into the, into the facility that's being dug as well and that, that's like thirty feet deep or something like that. It's pretty deep. And as you can imagine, being right next to the river, uh, they are struggling with de-watering a little bit there. Maybe I shouldn't say struggling with, they're dealing with de-watering on that. But everything's progressing kind of as we would expect. Um, no big surprises. We did find a water main where we didn't think it was, but also not real big deal. Um, we were able to shut that off and we're able to leave it off for a while as that area is served by a different route as well. Um, maybe just a quick update or reminder the, the schedule. So it is a long project. You know, we're, we're not slated to be done until the spring of twenty six. So we'll go all the way through this year and next construction season and then the following winter, um, we've got to do some work on the existing building that we can't do. Um, unless it's winter time, we've shut down the U V system and do some things there, so. But everything's going well and I just thought that I'd. Give a quick update and be here to answer any questions. I guess Taylor's working with our staff too. On the D N R loan and with Ellers on the, the, the rate adjustments and that kind of thing too. So that's all happening behind the scenes and maybe in few. Next meeting.
To be determined.
To be determined.
Yes.
That's all being worked on as well.
I don't know, we're pulling footage right now.
Mm hmm.
Know what I saw?
Yeah, yeah. So that's the, the bottom of that S B R, the big tanks. You know?
Magnificent, I'm living in the ground, I gotta say that.
Yes, looks a lot bigger in person than it does on paper, for sure.
Yeah, it does.
Lot of rebar out there too.
Yeah, oh, wow, yeah. Any questions for Eric? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item number three, presentation by Arts Parks and Rec Committee. Joyce, you're up.
Uh, I am Joyce Schaefer. I am the current Chair of the Arts Parks and Recreation Committee. I know that you have all gotten a copy, but I know it was probably like moments before the meeting started, so. Um, I guess I, my question to you is, would you like me to read this or do you just want? I mean, you've maybe had a chance to glance and I will, I guess, just maybe a couple of things that I would like to highlight from that.
Yes, but.
One more, uh, update of something that's been done is under the North Park number one. Um, the third item, which actually was kind of a safety priority concern about missing outlet covers on the main shelter pavilion outlets. Uh, that has been done, that has been taken care of, so there are now, um, metal outlet covers on there. Um, you know, as you know, we did this review a year ago, um. Actually, like in June, I think is when we actually came at that time back to committee of the whole or whatever at that time. Um, so we have gone to each of these parks again this year just to again do an assessment, look and see what kinds of needs there were. Um, and we did mark some of the things that we felt were more of safety priority concerns, really more because they were safety. Um, and so just that next safety one also has been taken care of, um, and the, the safety. There's two concerns at that park. One is just that the boards are kind of peeling and things. That's going to need to be a bigger project to do the replacement of those. Um, but the, the nails and screws that were kind of sticking out that we thought were more of a safety concern if a kid's on a skateboard and off they go and rip a. Pulling their arm from the screen, so that has been taken care of. Um, the old bathrooms down by the tennis courts, um, guess just the thing is, is that we really would encourage, hopefully sooner than later, that. We could just get those bathrooms power washed and get them painted, uh, the walls. Are they? Okay, so that's an update. Okay, thank you, sir. Good, good.
At which park?
At North Park, those bathrooms. So good, because that was something that's been on the list. Um, some information to add, you know, one of the things that we have been planning to do is to look at, you know, the whole adding more inclusive equipment. And those items are on here. These are items that we developed. As a committee, kind of looking through lots of options of inclusive equipment. These were ones that we really felt would really be nice additions. Um, I think. Jeff, I don't think you, I think it was Kyle that was with us when we went there and we talked about kind of the placement kind of being by where the other equipment currently is. We also, um, talked about the fact that there would have to be like a turf type of. Something put under that equipment and otherwise it's not going to be, the equipment could be all inclusive, but they can't get to it because you're not going to get a wheelchair over the. Bumpy grass, so that would be another expense, which other than I did a quick Google search and found out that turf can run anywhere from three to twenty dollars. Uh, per square foot and at this time we did not get specific measurements on how much we would need. Grant information, I did, I had been kind of reaching out back and forth to, uh. To April and I actually like an hour before the meeting got an email from her and here was an update what she gave to me for grant information. She said. She applied for a fit grant, which she said could possibly be used for inclusive equipment. Otherwise, she said, many playground equipment grants are based from the company that you get the equipment from. Um, so it is, I mean, I can certainly make a contact with where we are looking from this equipment to find out if that's something that they do. I had not heard. Of that, but maybe that's a possibility because she said, other than that, there really is not much available at this time as far as grants for this type of equipment. Which I guess kind of surprised me because I would have thought there would be more grants available. Um, but will, I will, again, I can certainly follow up with the company that we're dealing with and if they don't, maybe. They know somebody who does. Um, because obviously it is a lot, lot of, lot of dollars. Um, again, we do know Taylor informed us at our meeting the other night that we have received an Amory Area Foundation grant. For five thousand dollars, which as you can see, the prices of these, that will not really do a whole lot to help us, uh, move forward on that at this time. Um. I think, you know, South Twin Beach, and I don't know, Jeff, you are here, if there's anything more update. I think last year we had also talked about the cameras. I know now especially. Oh, we got them ordered? Good, good. Because obviously with pickleball and stuff getting set up there too. Um, and so the thought was, we can't really do, wouldn't want to do some of this fixing up of the bathhouse and all until there would be cameras, so. Um. I think, again, there are updates that are there in blue. I think we were. Ha- happy to see that since we met on Monday that there were some of these updates. Um, some of these things that were some safety concerns, um, have been, uh, things have been taken care of. Um. So, yeah, if unless you have any other questions, it's kind of there in front of you and we will just make sure as a committee that we kind of stay on top of this list and try to. See if we can get these things moving forward, especially again, I think we are. Pity about doing that inclusive equipment and I think, um, you know, we need to just try to exhaust all the possibilities we can to get some funding.
You never really have a designed layout or anything.
We're going to have to get.
Another envision is an area, a rock where if you were from the shelter. To around area where, uh, and this is what they have over in there, Jeff. They have a merry-go-round thing where it's wheelchair accessible, so it's level with the ground, if you will. Uh, and then. Then it has a beautiful setup and they have that drum circle, you know, so kids can make noise and that. Uh, so they've got. I've got pictures of the stuff too, Jeff, so I can show those with you. Uh. But if we have kind of a circular entrance, we've got the drums set up there and then we have the, uh. The seesaw thing and the merry-go-round type thing where the workers can go in that. Scumbering vision we get at North Park there, so that would be on the east side of the shelter, right?
The east side of the existing equipment.
Sure.
On the east side of the existing equipment.
Yes.
Side of the road that goes through the park, right?
Correct. Yes, yeah, it'd be kind of between the pavilion, the big pavilion and the equipment and.
Yeah, they're assault there.
Angle roughly, basically.
One thing that's there, I've never seen this, that it was being grow established there yet. And that's going to be, uh, we're going out too, so. Yeah, I mean, nobody uses it, so if we can use that area to with this building gets started, that would be great.
Question for you, Joyce, uh, things that you've got for playground equipment, that is just equipment or not installation or assembly or?
Those pieces of equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, can you be able to take a look at the skate park where she's referencing the boards that are chipping away?
Yeah, I haven't, but Kyle has been looking at it and he says the only way to fix that would be to have somebody come in, you know, the. All the boards, whatever they are, it's not plywood, it's some kind of laminate type.
Seemed like was kind of a laminate when we looked that day at that one.
Whatever company put that in.
Or is the substrate there, is that just wood with a laminate on the top of it or?
I think there's metal underneath the laminate, if I remember correctly.
So.
There was a wood something under that.
I think the sides of the structure might be wood.
Yes.
Underneath the laminate, like the ramps themselves are metal and then they have that. Flat laminate, whatever it is, surface on top of the metal and that's what's screwed down.
Well, and it's just at the very bottom where it's chipped away and everything, so. Right.
Healed up. We tried to kind of like push it down thinking, oh, could you, and it's like, no, you wouldn't be able to just put it down and.
Well, with any, uh. Will you type of, uh, options on this? Is this playground equipment a long timeout or?
Honestly, I have not contacted them, but now I'm going to contact them because I want to find out if they might do something with the grants for equipment, which.
If they know of somebody that does grants, they would know, and I think it would be helpful if you, if you check, check on the. Yeah.
Getting it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, this is, this is, uh, this cloud, I encourage you to do this every year because it, that's what it takes us to. Yeah. You know?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, alright, thanks, Joyce. Questions for Joyce, uh, Parks? In the rec, okay. Um. Item number four, Child Care Task Force Committee update.
Alright, so, um, I hope you all had a chance to look at, you know, that was sent out, um, just with some information that Paul Schaefer had. Collected for our task force committee. I keep calling it a task force. It's really not a task force anymore. It's committee, but. Um, we were asked, I believe it was by plan commission to look into what it would look like to update the old hospital space. As a childcare facility, um, we were able to get a contractor to look at that for us, um, without cost, which was very generous. Um, and the estimate came back just under a million, um, that's. Without any updates outside for green space, any playground equipment, any inside. Equipment supplies needed, um, to run the childcare facility. Um, the childcare committee. Is not in favor of going that direction because it sounds like there would not be additional investment outside of the city investment. Um, but the rent would still be required for whoever is in that space. Um, so it doesn't sound like a good financial option for us. It doesn't sound like the most viable option. So we also requested some information on what it would take to build a childcare facility that would have a hundred and twenty slots. Um, which we think is a reasonable starting place because anything under that, we're going to outgrow pretty quickly. Um, and the estimate that came back for that was we would need two acres of land. Um, and we would need about two million dollars. Um, so with those more concrete numbers, obviously that's not, we haven't gone out to bid, um, anything like that, but. With that space requirement and that cost estimate, what the committee is really looking for from the council now is, is this something that we want to move forward with? Or is this something that we don't feel is viable for the city? Um, because we have kind of sat and spun our wheels now for eight months. Uh huh, and it's time for us to either take action or set the project aside, so. Um, I'm happy to answer questions, uh, or find the answers to questions if I don't have the answers. Um, but we would like to have not necessarily a motion to move forward, but just. Your commitment to the project, if this is something we're going to continue to pour time and energy into.
I'm going to establish the minimum number. Okay.
Spoke to, um, a lot of surrounding communities with what their childcare facilities look like as far as slots. Um, I contacted the school to find out what their waitlist looks like. Um, to see how deep that is and what the wait time is at the school. Um, so we, we kind of evaluated communities that are similar size to ours and what, what their needs have been and what they've realistically been able to fill. If we build a childcare facility that has a hundred and twenty spots, that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to fill all one hundred and twenty of them right away.
True.
Um, but that gives us the flexibility to grow as these housing projects are coming in and hopefully more families are coming in. Um, rather than us building a fifty slot building. Then we are out of space right away and we were talking about some, some communities have done where they've started with a smaller building. And with, with the plan and the ability to expand later. Um, but the majority of the cost is going to be in that first upfront because that's when you're putting in all of.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, so, um. So from our perspective, as we talked about it, it made the most sense to just do it from the beginning because the cost of building a building is only going to continue to increase. Um, so that, does that answer?
That does. The operation, it hasn't been any companies interested in, within the. Childcare center. I mean, that's not something the city would operate, so.
So, um, we do have several contacts and surrounding communities that have expressed interest in Amory in the past. The biggest holdup for them was that there wasn't a viable building for them to move into and they did not have the funds to build the building themselves. So, um, it's something that I think. We for sure have one person who would be interested, um, who runs a childcare company in a surrounding community. Um, but I think we would probably invite. All of the interested parties to come in and speak with us so that we could learn more about how they run their business and then we could pick one that makes the most sense for our community if we get to that point.
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions. So do you envision that entity as leasing this building from the city, paying rent? Um, the city donates a building and doesn't charge anything for the use of the building or?
I guess my vision of it, um, is that we would do some sort of like rent to own situation. Because it's not a building that we necessarily want to be tied into doing all of the maintenance for forever and ever and ever. And it's good for the business owner to invest into a building for themselves, so some sort of rent to own situation. And we would have to come up with a reasonable fee schedule for the city. Um, but that, that is my personal vision for it, just because I don't think we should be donating a building to a business. Um, but I also don't think that we want to be, you know, a decade down the road and we're replacing the roof on something, you know what, so.
When you talk about rent to own, so I'm thinking about that and how that would work.
Mm hmm.
Um, so. Whoever this entity would be, we need to have a viable business plan. That, um, and would need to have a timetable attached to it.
Right.
And some things like that. It's just some thoughts.
Yeah, absolutely.
At one time was it, oh, excuse me, there was some talk of the lower level of the new apartment complex.
So. So that is a potential option that would wipe this whole project out. Um, we. We last spoke with them a month ago. And it was still a possibility. However, they're still waiting for all of the wetland information to come back to know if that second building is even a possibility on that property.
They did their core sampling stuff this week, so they should have more information after what they did on Monday.
So if they decide that that's what they want to do and they want to take that on and they, they want to run with it, then Amory has more childcare and Amory doesn't, the city doesn't have to necessarily invest in it. Um, which obviously that's what I hope happens, um, but I don't want to put all of my eggs in that basket because. One of the things that has been brought up is, okay, well, what kind of residents do they want to attract? Are they trying to attract older residents who don't want a childcare facility in the. Department? Are they hoping to attract our young families and then it's, you know, the perfect scenario for them? We don't, we don't necessarily know what their priorities are as the developer. Um, so we need to not just assume that they're going to build this facility and that our problems are going to be solved, so. Um, from what I think the biggest roadblock is, is two acres is a decent chunk of land in a town as developed as ours is. Um, and there are very, very limited options for what that space looks like.
That was, I was willing to get to that question. Have you, have, have you looked around to see if there's anything that would be viable?
So Paul had a couple of suggestions, um, so let me pull those up here. So he had suggested. So the wrong notes. Um, so there is obviously space in the industrial park. He personally doesn't love that idea because we're obviously hoping to develop it for industry.
Mm hmm.
Um, there is some land over by the processing technologies building. I'm not sure who owns it. Um, but Paul said there's enough sitting there. It's like four acres. Um, we could pursue buying back some of the land from the Sundance developers. I don't know if they would want to do that. Probably depends on how that development goes. Um, and then there are some private residential owners in town that he thinks we could approach to potentially purchase from. But that doesn't leave us very many options.
Yeah.
So, hon- honestly, the ideal spot for it is where those apartments are going. Which is again, why I'm like, oh, hopefully they just do. Because really that's the ideal location because it's so close to the school. Everyone's dropping their kids off at school. Anyway, you can just stop there on your way. Um, but. Uh, there, there are a few industries in town we could approach to try to buy some of their excess land, but there's no guarantee that they're going to go with that, so. That to me is one of the big roadblocks that would make us say, maybe we need to set this aside.
Mm hmm. And what type of reaction have you had from industries that you've approached to the possible stakeholders that would benefit mostly from. The childcare center?
Um, have invited them to our meetings. We've had very limited participation in them. Um, everybody likes the idea of it, but they haven't really been investing their time into it, so. Um, one of the things that we've talked about is if we could get businesses to help invest, then they would get discounted slots for their employees or we could set something up like that, that would maybe make it. More attractive, um, and the big push was with, um, our. You know, big industry in town, but there might be small businesses that are interested in that too. I don't think we should just limit that to people who employ a hundred people or more. Um. So a lot of this has a lot of flushing out to do yet, um, but. We didn't want to get too into the weeds before we decided if this was even a viable option, given how much land it requires and the cost. Which the cost is only going to go up like everything else, so.
Right, and that's the cost of the building, not land.
Not the home, that's not. That's not, that's just, we have a building.
How many square feet of the building like?
And those, you told?
Yeah, something like that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was in the email that you got, yeah. Yeah, and it's, I mean, we've talked about this before, but any of the buildings that we currently have in town would need significant remodeling. In order to be even remotely close to up to the Wisconsin state standard for childcare, so. I mean, any project that we go into with a remodel is going to be, you know, a million plus.
Mm hmm.
So. Yeah. The, the space thing for me was a little bit defeating just because I don't know what we're going to put. Um, but that's my update.
Can I just say, Michaela, first of all. I want to compliment you on all of the work you and the committee has put up in this. And your passion for this. And, um, I just, at the county level, we just examined this same issue.
Mm hmm.
And two years ago, when I worked in Osceola. Um, there also, it's an issue there and there was a potential expansion in the industrial park area by a business. Who's in that business now. Um, and I know, I know it's an important issue and countywide.
Mm hmm.
Um, you know, I, I don't, uh. I, I have hesitations about where to go with this. Where it just seems to be so much unknown, but yet. Um, to flesh out all the answers is. Um, you know, would take a considerable more commitment.
Mm hmm.
You know, to do that and I can't, I don't think that we can expect you in the committee, you know, to do that and so I'm glad that you, you brought it forward. Yeah, so. One of the things that I hear from people. Is, um, I think that this would be a hard sell to the public. I recognize the value of it and I recognize the value of keeping. Uh, families with young children here and when people, we want people to stay here after they're done with school. Um, I also, you know, I recognize value of the other things the city supports, the senior center, um, the golf course. Um, the airport, the, um, you know, uh, promotional position. Um, you know, I recognize the value of all of those things. And people want a swimming pool and they want to swim. And a lot of those people don't live in this city.
Mm hmm.
So, you know, I'd be interested in how do we get cost sharing participation from anybody? From other entities or, or businesses or municipalities.
Hmm.
And, you know, I get a little bit of, this is a, a very, very difficult thing to do. If it were easy, everybody'd be doing it. And we wouldn't have any and it would be very successful. So I'm not quite sure where, um, where to go with this myself. You know, I, I do hear some comments, you know, and I'm not saying I agree with those. And, you know, the city pays for a lot of. And, you know, the city pays for a lot of things already that some people view as being things that not everybody benefits from.
Hmm.
And I think that that would be an aspect of a tough sell of it. That doesn't mean that I think it should be shot down.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I don't. It's just, I don't know where to go with it. You know, maybe we should, I know we can't wait on the potential developer. And if they would be able to do that in the basement of their residential building or not, you know, maybe we can't wait for that. But maybe we kind of have to, I feel a little bit. I, I don't know how everybody else feels. And here I go again, opening my big mouth and sticking my nose out, you know, and, and everything.
I, I would answer that there are potential benefits for everyone because having young people in your community benefits everyone. That gives you a workforce, that gives you families paying taxes.
Yes.
There is so much good that comes from having young people. And we can't just be a retirement community. That's how communities die. I'm not advocating, I mean, not advocating that we just boom into this huge metropolis. But I mean, we have, how many nursing homes in town? Someone has to work there. You know, we have all these businesses in town that are wonderful, but the business owners can't run those things by themselves a hundred percent of the time. Um, and that I, and I'm not saying that you disagree with these things, but that would be my sell to people. I think young families are what's going to keep Amory great. Um, and I've lived here my whole life. I went off to school. I came back and chose to raise my kids here. Um, so I am very passionate about it. Um, but I just, we, we have all these housing developments coming in. We want to have this industrial park full of businesses. That's not going to happen if people can't go to work because they have nowhere to send their kids. It's a trifecta we talk about all the time. Um, and I'm not saying that building the childcare center is the option that maybe works best for Amory, but we've looked into all kinds of different things that different communities have done. And most of them are not going to be realistic for us. Um, so that's, that would be my argument back to those people who are skeptical. Um, because you know, my taxes go to a lot of things that benefit them that don't benefit me. So.
And you know, and as, as a boomer, I'm a boomer, like I admit it. Um, you know, boomers are aging out and who's going to take care of us?
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Uh, there was a, a large timeframe there where people didn't have big families. So they had one or two childrens. You know, that seems to maybe be, be changing a little bit. Just to be, there was always a grandma, you know, uh, to help with childcare, um, you know, and, and that doesn't seem as prevalent as either. So I don't know. These are very complex things and I don't know what the right things and the right answers are for, for any of this. You know, I guess I will just be quiet now.
Well, I think Michaela's not wrong because you, you, you get what you build for. And we've got senior center, we've got built onto Little Ridge, we've got Evergreen, we've got Water Side, we've got Oak Brook, we've got, you know, that's, that's what we have. So if we don't build for somebody else, um, that's who, that's who we're going to get. Unfortunately, I think the hard stop is, is land.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it's, the idea's not a problem. So I'm going to say that I don't know how to fix that, except to keep working with the company that's looking at building apartments. Is it possible to, you know, work with them to get something that is viable for the community? But I don't know whether we could build it.
Right. The other thing is that if they put a childcare facility in that building, it's going to be significantly smaller than the kind of build that we're talking about. Which is great to have that option, but they're also going to run out of slots probably pretty quickly. And then we'll be back in the same spot.
You've identified what every company or every entity that wanted to open a daycare in this community has run into. There was no place.
Mm-hmm.
And unless, unless, you know, the city has environment in the first floor of that building, we're exactly in the same places we would be if we went back to the hospital. Now, they don't want to sell it, uh, they don't want to store it. And so consequently, anything that would be done there would be under the thumb. It's always been my premise that cities should not be involved in building anything that private industry would do. Private industry doesn't build buildings unless they can turn a, turn a profit with them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the crux of the matter for daycare is that where the people out there that will do daycare and do a good job of it. And you go and move around us and find those folks that are, uh, managing appropriately, have good staff and so on and so forth. But none of them could afford to buy or to have a building if they had to make a mortgage payment on. Everyone that I'm aware of either is in something that's owned and rented reasonably, uh, was foreclosed on or some, something like that to get a reasonable building that they could, uh, use for their, for childcare. So, so I think we're not this, I don't believe we'd step on any private toes. Uh, and if someone steps forward and said, hey, I was going to do that, whoopie, let's, you know, get on, get on the planning commission and let's build it.
Hmm.
Um, but, but I don't see that happening. And I'm convinced in my own mind that, uh, that's part of the trifecta that we need to do. And that's part of the planning and we have some planning commission folks here, uh, that needs to be done to, um, make it more, uh, amenable to development. We have, we're working with three developers right now. One has actually started building. One that we met with, uh, yesterday, in fact. And, uh, and is still, you know, is I believe getting closer to consummation. And, uh, at least one of it was drilling holes in the ground out there, uh, this week or last week. Uh, so, uh, so the potential is there, I believe. And I, and I think, I think we maybe haven't looked quite hard enough. Uh, planning is talking about, uh, we'll be talking about where the city can go. Um, we talked with Eric, uh, Chairman Eric, not S H Eric, or, yeah, a different hat, um, about the possible, uh, what, uh, extraterritorial zoning would look like. And I think, uh, it's time for us to think out of the box when it comes to, to, uh, how we're going to make, not only this, you know, what, what this is besides the three, uh, housing, uh, folks that will have interest in it now. Um, so I, I, I think what maybe that's what you're looking for is a, uh, revolution that says that we, a comfort resolution, if you will, like an adabong. Um, uh, if that's what's called for, but, uh, a commitment to, um, not to spend any dollars yet or anything like that, but to lend the authority to the city council to this, to a project going forward and the investigation going forward. And if you need some money to go someplace to look at somebody else's building, I think, you know, we can, we, that's the kind of commitment that we need to do it this time.
Right. Did you have some comments for us?
I do.
I, I thought maybe Frank had some comments for us. It looked like he wanted to say something.
Um. Uh, I did a little, what, I guess what I'd like to do is maybe meet with, um, Michaela. Cause there are some, you know, some significant issues that need to be addressed. And, and I don't think that you can do it right, right here. Uh, we got a couple of items. Uh, and, uh, I just got done with, in books, got done involved with, and they had, they got lucky uh, in the sense that they have a unique, uh, construction project going on. They bought the old DNR building. And, uh, by leasing it back to the DNR, two thirds of it are going to be leased back to the DNR to offset the costs of their debt payments for the facility. They're also, uh, then they're going to put, the first third is going to be a PD station. Back park's going to be still rented to the DNR and they're putting in, they're going to go with, uh, five year lease. Now granted, when you lease a building from the state, it's a whole, you know, pretty, pretty secure. You know, if they can't make the payment, the world's going to end. So we don't have to, we don't have to, we don't have to worry. They didn't have to worry about that. But, uh, they did go out and do, uh, I could just repeat one thing so to keep this in your head, but I do want to talk to them, Michaela, about it, is the fact that I think when they went out and did a $2.2 million filing, I think that was the cost of the building itself. I think the interest payment was, uh, three percent.
Hmm.
So the yearly cost came out to about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that you have to make the payment on.
Mm-hmm.
Which is about $12,000 a month. So there's going to be, how are you going to, if you're going to invest, what's, how are you going to se- secure that investment back to the, to the city? And, you know, if you're going to go with the rent to buy kind of thing, there's a lot of questions that have to be focused on and evaluated and reviewed before you, you make that jump.
Right.
In, into it. And, you know, like, it's like someone else says, she's got a lot of projects going on, programs going on. How are you going to, you know, how are you going to fund everything?
Right.
Uh, you know, there are ways, I mean, if you can get commitments from the business people, like, for example, if you have a hundred and twenty unit facility and if you could guarantee, uh, a percentage of those are going to be either paid, paid, or at least from the standpoint, businesses will, you know, cook market for you, that facility, that would be fine. Uh, so that you could get maybe fifty percent. If you're going for a hundred and twenty, businesses can guarantee sixty. I'm just spitballing stuff. But the biggest issue is the, the city is going to go out and pay, city is going to commit themselves to the project. And they're going to have to commit themselves to a twenty year note for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's the power of the building. I don't want to get into it too much, but if you do own the building, then you're going to be funding the operational costs associated with that building. Uh, and then you're going to get that back through a lease with the individuals. As long as that's, and, and I have no idea what people charge.
Right.
Uh, what's just the base cost of, uh, like a child being in daycare?
It totally depends. I have friends in the cities that pay twice their mortgage to send their kids to childcare.
I know, I know, and my, my daughter, when she had two kids and it was at a house.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they could have sent, it was a tuition.
Mm-hmm.
Tuition payment.
Yeah. And that's the other issue that we run into in a community like ours is how do we make sure that our childcare providers are paid well, but our families can afford to send their kids there? I mean, it's, it's a really complex issue. And that's, I mean, we can dig into all of those things, but that's why I'm here now before we spend hours and hours and hours and hours of our lives digging into all these things just to say, you know what? We can't swing that payment. It's not going to work for us. I just, I would hate to ask that of the committee and, and put that much in myself when I have so much going on in my personal life. Um, that's why I'm here now saying, okay, these are big numbers. This is a big ask for land. Is it even viable?
I have just a comment, Michaela, some of that information I gave you from the county has information about what people within Oak County are.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I don't know if that'd be helpful or not. Also, there's a lot of daycare providers in Oak County that are not licensed.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I think is hit, what, what's going on is the unlicensed daycare providers are picking up the slack that the licensed providers cannot, cannot provide.
Mm-hmm.
But.
They don't want the slack either because they're.
Yeah, they're not even, they're, I mean, they're, they're.
Yeah.
Thing to do.
But the other thing is logistics too. Somebody does, drives their kid forty-five miles and thirty minutes away just after working all day.
Right. Um, yeah, there's always been a lot of unlicensed providers in Oak County. That's not something new. Um, and.
Not saying that they're bad providers or they're good providers. It's just they're not.
But they're just, there, there aren't enough providers, whether licensed or not, available for families. Um, because some families are totally fine sending their kids to an unlicensed provider because they know them really well and it's, it's not a big deal. Um, but some people, they will only go to a licensed provider and everybody has the right to do what they want with their kids. Um, the, the other big issue that I think we're going to run into is staffing a little bit because the state recently changed the requirements for kids under the age of two. Um, so you need significantly more staff to have kids under the age of two. And kids under the age of two is really the issue that we're running into here in Amory. Um, because there's a lot more openings for kids older than two, but you'll run into, oh, it's going to be at least a year before we can get you. You have to get on a waitlist before you're even pregnant. So it's, uh, the staffing issue is also, I think, going to be a problem. Um, so.
Before we get too excited about it, I, I just want to mention to you that, that, uh, I'm sure other communities around too have done that, but Amory has in the past funded various things or assisted funding with various things that, uh, got them up and going. And I would mention, uh, you know, several, um, because there are other things that, that need to be, they need to have city help to get them going, uh, whether it's land, um, or buildings and so on and so forth. Uh, it's not, it's not without precedence that government has helped, uh, entities or things like that. Uh, though especially when you think about, uh, public services that are out there, which I pretty much regard childcare at this point in time as a, as public service. Uh, golf course, if there wasn't city, uh, involvement, we didn't have an airport if there wasn't city involvement. Um, I'm sure Mike Mickelson got some help from the city when he started Fabricatech in nineteen fifty-eight. Um, you know, so it's, it's not that, that, uh, was, uh, uh, economic boost available. So.
I guess the only thing I would like to say is I'm not trying to, to, uh, deep six the project, if you will, but when you get to the point of wanting to.
You gotta pay for it.
Or, I mean, need to look at, kind of look at, uh, the fiscal realities of it and, and, you know, come up, and there's always ways you can end up, I'll use the term, uh, manipulating, uh, or manipulating the, uh, a program to make it work. But there's, uh, there's some significant costs associated to major projects and I would consider this a major project.
You bet.
And, uh, you know, I know I've had, I had two kids, but that was a hundred years ago. And, uh, we, we, we got us whatever the cost was. Everybody struggled with childcare.
Exactly.
All the time, but, uh, you're, you're, you're looking at some real dollars here.
If I could just comment too, I, what I see positive is that you're providing daycare for a hundred and twenty people. And, and so there's, there's efficiencies in numbers. Uh, you know, I've looked at daycare here and, and every little household, not every, but you know what I mean? They're all small units and the, and it worked. That was fine. Um, but you know, if, if you look at a, a nice $10,000, uh, square foot facility, you really can do a lot of things and, 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 um, and the truth is there, people are, are paying a lot already. And so if, if you, you know, you have to, you still have to look at all the numbers. I, it seems to me that, that if you're bringing in revenue from a hundred and twenty units and, and granted, it won't be right away. Um, it, it seems like it should work.
Have you talked with the other townships or?
We have not spoken with any of the governing bodies for the townships. No. We have a member of our task force that is from a neighboring township. I think that there is maybe potential to do something similar to what we've done with the fire department, but I don't want to make any promises on that without having spoken to them. Um, it's, they're, they're also in need. So.
Yeah. And so, and like I said, with numbers, you know, maybe if, if a township or two from a central location, you know, one can help the land, one can help with building. You know, one can help the land, one can help with building whatever. You can build a hundred and fifty slots and share the cost.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why that, I'm not sure why this business isn't profitable. Restaurant wouldn't be up here if it wasn't profitable, uh, you know, things like that. I'm not sure why childcare.
But you're asking somebody who would have a business plan that would explain how you support that kind of a building with a hundred to a hundred and twenty slots.
Yeah.
And, and then we have the risk of, what if they go bankrupt in three years and we're gonna start over.
Right, and they start talking about insurance and things like that for those, and then the cost of the building. Um, it becomes to the point where just the average person can't really. Step into that building and start an operation. It's, it's gotta be somebody bigger than that.
Not just an immediate problem that's like, and um, you know, I think we could, I think we could leverage. The ownership there.
And you said that the counties, and I've read some of the, the things online, but the county's been looking at. Ways to address daycare and is, is there any? Task force, is there any committee, is there, you know, anybody looking at that?
Um, it was on um, the Health and Human Services Committee meeting suite. And the information was presented and talked about. Um, one of our committee, one of our citizen committee members is a um, retired school district administrator. And so I asked, you know, him some questions, because we also talked about what school districts are doing childcare. Just what everybody is doing, trying to do something and talked about that. But um, so we had discussion about it, but there was not interest um. From the other committee members and um, taking it up that I could see. We got the information, everybody was thanked for presenting it, you know, it's something to digest. No, and um, I asked some questions and we talked about, but it, it was not something that like. Um, any of them jumped on, like, let's do something about this, um, you know. I may, um, you know, wait a month or two and bring it back and say, okay, we talked about this a couple of months ago. You know, let's gauge here what um, the interest is, um, some of them. Um, do not view it as being government's responsibility to do these kinds of things, you know, out of the gate. This isn't government's job. Um, so, and, and it's not my intent to be discouraging. I'd like to bring it back up again in a couple of months and say, hey, we talked about this. You know, let's gauge our interests here, you know, would you like to invite, um, you know. Our, our city council member who's heading this up in Amory, would you like to invite her to speak to us about this? And kinda see what reaction, you know, I can act, so. As the committee chair, I do have input in, in setting the agenda. Um, also, the other committee members have input too, you know, the, you know, items for next month's agenda and we have a work plan that we adhere to as well. Um, so, like I said, it's a lot of information to digest, nobody jumped on it. But, you know, I, I'd probably be happy to bring it back in a couple of months and say, hey, you know. So, where are we going with this?
The reason, the reason we embarked on this is because. If we expect um, someone to invest in, in industrial park and you need people to be here to work. A, a daycare is a big part of that. If we're seeing development, houses, apartments. And we don't have, you know, that to me now seems like a part of the infrastructure of a community, not just somebody's backyard.
Right.
And it needs to be, I think, held to that level, so maybe the county level is, is, you know. Come up with an incubator system, some way to get started and then the county's. Polk County's big, how could you, you know, come up with a plan and then start citing different places and.
Yeah.
Outside of communities is where you're gonna find land.
I would also just respond to you with, I normally would also say it's really not the government's job to get involved in these things. I'm very pro small government, I'm pro small spending, um, I however. Don't think at this point, all of our projects are gonna be successful if we don't do something.
I, I think Schaefer Manufacturing in Milltown, what happened there, that's, that's a model.
Yes.
You know, that's innovative, successful, um, you know, uh. It would be ideal if there was a, a business in Amory or a manufacturer in Amory. That, um, you know, could use that as a plan and a model, you know, what happened there. Um, the County Economic Development Corporation was involved in that and also the West Central Wisconsin, um. Workforce Development County Consortium, Alphabet Soup was also involved in that. I do sit on that board. As the Polk County representative, I did mention that to them, you know, so I don't. I don't think, you know, all hope is lost or anything, but it, it's a pretty complex piece of pie. I think that for it to work in Amory. And just my opinion from the little bit I know about it, is that it would need buy-in from one of the manufacturers. I think buy-in from one of the manufacturers would be crucial, you know, Cardinal or somebody like that. You know, I think that would be crucial to making this successful. Without that, I just, I don't know.
And that's, all of these questions are what I've been kicking around with, is this even possible? Um, which is why I bring it here, because I don't know.
I think without buy-in from a local manufacturer. I don't think it is possible and I say that because we sat here for an hour and a half and looked at our capital improvement plan and the needs of the city. And there is so much need for so many kinda uh, traditional things that seem to be. For the most part, needs more than wants and I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that this isn't a need because clearly it isn't. But it's just, you know, it's a couple million dollars, it's a death service, it's a very complex thing, I don't know.
Well, I think that is a need when we're coming into a trifecta, we've got the South Industrial Park that we're trying to. Attract business to, we've got buildings that are building new homes, so people that, you know, are gonna move to a city. Hopefully we'll have some manufacturing base going out there into industrial park. But you're correct, if you don't have a, a route to have childcare in the Bronx. It's pretty difficult for the, the better moving these new homes. To, to have the, the workforce that is out, if that's necessary, so. I think, I think we're just continually moving forward with it and continuing exploration and um. I think that's something that we can move forward with. At some point, somewhere, maybe, maybe we have a meeting with Cardinal to see if we're gonna measure from them. If they would have any interest in buying in with us. So, it's not just Cardinal, it wouldn't have to be just one manufacturing either, so.
What I can see, uh, and I don't know how everybody else feels, um, and I think it's worth Michaela and Frank sitting down together. And I think that it's worth, um, if, if we can, or Frank can get some. Um, some contact with the developer and see if they can give any type of timeframe. As to when they would know if they could or could not have any interest in doing anything in the basement of the building that's built. You know, um, maybe gets a couple of answers there. Have a, have a meeting with Cardinal, have representatives of Cardinal and representatives of the city and the committee, sit down and meet, of course, invite. More than just Cardinal, not just that, I'm picking on Cardinal, um, you know, with Paul Schaefer. And see, like you said, they haven't been real amenable to um, attending your meetings, maybe they need the mayor to give them a call.
Yeah, I think, I think they're not against the, I don't think they're against the project, I think there's just. A lot of unknown, so they're not, you know.
Without the city, we can't make decisions on T I D funds until we had a plan, you know.
Yeah.
And so I think one of the first.
That we can't do anything with.
Right, well, well, we have, we have uh, in process. A plan, the planning grant to that uh, that uh. A development of plan to for recreation and the whole nine yards, um. And I don't know just exactly where that's at, but it's just getting, so we just got awarded the money, what, two weeks ago?
What?
The, the planning grant money.
We don't even have the money yet. Go to training in September, a virtual training for, required for C D B G, I'm not sure when the funding will actually.
Uh, so we have some, at least planning funds available, but I, you know, talking about. Michaela's done all kinds of research and our committee has done it, it's time for us to either say. Do you go with it and we're, so we're gonna support you, I mean, we won't spend any money yet. Or, you know, don't waste your time anymore, so that's.
I say we continue with the exploration, that brings us, as I'm seeing in Cardinal and some other.
Whoever the biggest employers are and talk.
Actually, even Amory schools are, are, you know, because they're nuts, they can't serve the whole.
Right, then they've got a, a healthy ruling list to give, it's understandable though.
So, if it, so I think, I think that, that comfort resolution will say, go ahead or. Or let's stop. Alright.
To continue the exploration of this project.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded to uh, continue the childcare options. That are available in the city with Michaela still as chair and uh. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, and if it helps any to get the mayors involved, I'd be glad to help you.
Sounds good.
There are some of those folks that, you know, that that's what they think, you know, I mean, whatever. Alright, the last but not the least. Police Contract Negotiating Committee, um, I've talked to three miscreants involved in doing that. Now, we'll have to look that up, probably before they move what they're getting into. Uh, so I'd like to appoint Eric and Mike and Roger, the negotiating committee, um. I would accept that appointment there if you are so inclined to approve that.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve um, Eric and Mike and Roger as the negotiator. Uh, for the police union contract negotiations, um, they. I'll second.
Alright, motion's made and seconded to approve those appointments, so in favor, say aye.
Sorry.
You have a discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
The discussion is, I would just like to make a suggestion that we have our interim administrator.
Oh, I would say, similarly about saying, no question.
So labor attorney?
Saying, he's involved now, so.
Thanks.
I'm curious, does the city use a labor attorney anymore or does, or does not?
I think that's for discussion for the, for the counselors to have, right, and that's the last negotiation.
Yeah, I think it's something that it'd become, if it becomes necessary, we know. It's not something that I would say you need because you need.
You can always bring him to a meeting if you think it's gonna be a happy.
Yeah, absolutely, I don't, we don't know what the negotiation is at all.
I mean, it's, so I've done this before.
I have one question in relationship to the committee, since you have three members that are on the board.
Yes.
Uh, would you have to, I mean, post?
Possibly.
Because uh, even though you're regoing in the closed session, obviously, you have, except for the first meeting.
It's the entire form of the Public Safety Committee, it is the Public Safety Committee.
Yes, so it's already, you know, basically.
Notice basically as a form of the Public Safety Committee and it'll have to be within that committee that they do these negotiations.
And then open the meeting, go into closed session.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
And, and not all of the negotiations have to be closed, I mean, that's.
All negotiations should be closed. You don't wanna be an open session on any kind of discussion on any particular item.
Right.
And that's the opening, exchange of proposals is over. That, not to insult anyone's capabilities of doing this, but they have representation when. So, that was my only thought.
That was my question. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, so are you. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.